This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Thursday, June 5th, 2025 to order at 7:00 P. M. If we could all rise for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item number three additions and changes to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if the board would consider moving item nine A, which is the audit report along with the Board of Finance to just force item number six right after five A.
Move to move nine A to five B?
I think.
Yeah. Any objections?
No.
Sounds good, does? Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Awesome. Brings us to public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office, or the board chair, or with any of the Board of Selectmen. Persons wishing to comment online tonight should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized.
There is nothing online.
Any public comment from those present? Excellent. All right. Moving on to item number five A. The good to know special recognition this month. We have a 2025 Pride Month proclamation. If you could read that to me?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Town of Hebron observes Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas the town of Hebron recognizes the month of June as Pride Month commemorating the historic Stonewall uprising of 1969, which sparked the modern day LGBTQ plus civil rights movement. And whereas Pride Month serves as an opportunity to celebrate the contributions and achievements of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning individuals in our community and beyond. And whereas Hebron observes June as a time to honor the LGBTQ plus community and reflect upon the important contributions of LGBTQ plus residents to the town and the United States as a whole. And whereas the town of Hebron recognizes values and promotes inclusivity, equality, and respect for all individuals. And whereas by acknowledging Pride Month, we affirm our commitment to fostering a welcoming and supportive town, free from discrimination and prejudice, where all our residents can live, work, and thrive. And whereas we remain vigilant against continued discrimination against the LGBTQ community. And whereas we affirm our support for our LGBTQ residents and commend the efforts of local LGBTQ plus organizations, activists, allies, and community members who work tirelessly to advance the rights and well-being of LGBTQ individuals in our town. Now therefore, we, the Hebron Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month, and we encourage all residents to join us in reflecting on the progress made while we endeavor to continue building a future of inclusiveness and acceptance for all. Signed, Keith C. Pettit, Chairman, Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
That brings us to item five B, which was moved from nine A. That is the audit update for the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit.
Then should I come down and join us?
Should we go and check?
We just sent them a tech, no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, we're supposed to get one.
Okay.
If we can do the appointment if you want.
All right. Sounds good. We will table five B for now, and we will go on to six A. Library Board of Trustees resignation. Dan, do you?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Patricia Ayers from the Douglas Library Board of Trustees with regret, and thanks for her service to the town of Hebron.
Excellent. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Just let me know. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. Motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to item seven, if you want to do town managers.
I'll do the report and then.
Sound good?
We found this one up there to find out what's going on. We moved them up at their request in the beginning of the meeting, and I hope the honors has joined us. So, but under the town manager's report, I'm happy to say that the skateboard park has been completed and is now open. And then the ball field lighting is expected for Friday, this Friday, tomorrow night at 6:30. So if the selectmen could attend, that would be great. They're going to throw the first pitch under the lights. I think the ball courts are going well. The pavements of the courts is done. They got a lot of cure for a couple of weeks before they put the actual coating on it and the line striking, but they're installing the fences as we speak. We're going to interview, set up interviews next week for the Director of Administrative Services, which is Donna's position. Going through that process like we normally do with a panel, and then we scored, and then there'll be scores will be brought in and turned in and be a second interview. The state has a budget, thank God, so they're setting the mill rate as we speak. Hopefully Donna got some good news and they're going to come down and join us. We're still working out some kinks on the new traffic light at Route 66 and 318 Wall Street. We met out there with the engineers today. There's a couple of different codes you can put in it, but right now if somebody's on the Wall Street side and crossing towards the bank, you can still get the green light while the people are in the pedestrian crossings. That's not really. Yeah, well, it's kind of yield to pedestrian, but that's, we're going to try to get that even a little bit, have all the lights.
Yes, correct.
Red until it's clear. So, working on it. Still working with the building committee on the school roofs and the DPW contracts, which have been approved by the town attorney and their center work to the architectural firm. So they'll be stimulating those back to us. Hopefully at the beginning of next week, and I'll sign and it'll be executed.
Have the final bills come in for the off-field lighting and all that work yet, or no?
I don't, I believe, I don't believe so.
Okay.
And of course, we're closing out the, we're closing out the end of the fiscal year, you know, as it's now in June now, so that we're going to be busy closing DOs and seeing how we, you know, end the, end the year, but anticipate in the black.
Awesome.
That's my report.
What's your signal?
In lieu of proceeding on to dates, I think we are able to go back to five B at this point. The fiscal year 2023-2024 town audit update.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me? My name is Santo Cardon. I had to go on on my phone. And is this my part?
Yes, it is.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. All right. And I apologize. I tried going, going via my computer. If I knew it was going to have this kind of an issue, I would just came on, came in person. Well, my name is Santo Cardon, Principal with CLA. I work with state and local government groups, and I used to be a head of the art for this, for the town of Hebron. But I recently made a switch to consulting and advisory, and I was brought on to help Lori out with finishing, closing out 24. There were some general ledger maintenance issues related to AP, AR, and some rollover issues with the system that was being utilized. That along with being short-staffed, I think it was just a matter of us spending some time and cleaning it up. And I think Lori's been doing a good job of getting things done with what she could. We're almost done. I think in about two weeks, we should have everything wrapped up so the audit can start. And I think by the end of summer, we should have a completed audit for the town of Hebron.
Questions?
Any questions? Sorry?
No. So what you have in front of you is from our auditor from CLA, Leslie Zoll. And when an audit, and Santo, correct me if I'm wrong, talking about the reason that Leslie asked us to circulate this letter that she wrote, I guess if an audit is going to be more than six months late, she is required to write to the town or the Board of Finance to alert them to that fact? Is that, am I getting it right, Santo?
Yeah. And I apologize. I thought you were going to hand this memo out to the Board of Finance, but this is fine. Yeah. It's just a memo, you know, just a memo to those charged with governance, letting you guys know, hey, we're going to be more than six months late. OPM generally doesn't like this. They're going to, they're going to ask for two-week updates going forward from Lori. And at the same time, we're, you know, going forward, we're just going to, any, any audits that are more than six months late in general, just receive a material we just over financial reporting, which will be part of like your findings and stuff. But it just needs to be communicated to those charged with governance, yes. And we lay out the reasons, and one of the paragraphs, we lay out the reasons for you guys being late and all that great stuff. I kind of just explained. I'm sorry, Lori, I thought you were in the other meeting. I didn't realize you, I thought you were in this meeting.
We popped down because we're in the same building, just a floor above.
Gotcha.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
So I'm assuming this is going to push back several months, the finalization of funds that are being transferred into non-lapsing accounts?
And it'll push back what we think is going to be our final fund balance number, our surplus number. It won't change what we believe is going to be the surplus number.
Okay.
It'll just push it back a little bit. Some of the problems that we had were the way the system was handling our accounts payable. The way the town accounted for its invoices, we had to change that. So we've had a lot of adjusting entries to make to get it to a point where the auditing firm can actually come in and do their field work. So we expect that to happen in the next two weeks and have an audit by the end of the summer.
Yeah, there were some issues with the way encumbrances were being rolled over. They were actually getting rolled over into AP account, accounts payable accounts. And we don't know how they were mapped that way, but that was created initially for us to be able to close everything.
So those of you that may not know, in 2019, the town changed its software from the Phoenix to this Tyler iVisions ERP. And traditionally, what a town would do would be to hire a consultant, or at least use an arm of your auditing firm to help do the crosswalk with the new software company representative itself. And apparently, the ladies that were in the finance department did the best they could, probably not knowing that it would have been beneficial to use a consultant. And it appears that the mapping or the crosswalk was not 100% complete. We didn't find that out until maybe a year ago, as the accounts payable issue kept compounding over the years. So bad thing happened, good thing that that happened, because we're figuring out where the inadequacies are in the system.
Just to clarify a little bit further, when, and I think Mike, you and I are the only two in the room that were on the Board of Finance when we, in the new system, we were advised that Eiler no longer provided support for rollover, which was, in my case, news to me, because I went to a Tyler system and they, they moved us, crosswalked us from our, our old system. So the finance department was under the gun. They had no way to get assistance. I don't know if they reached out to the auditors or not, but we were advised by the finance director at that time that we were responsible to move from one system to the other, which I'll leave it at that. And Santos, can you clarify how long this has been an issue?
You know, for some reason, I don't remember year one of me being there. I, I feel like the encumbrance, the encumbrances were rolling correctly. I just don't, I don't understand how the, the systems automatically create an AP rollover accounts to account for encumbrances when it should be hitting the reserve for encumbrance account, which is an equity account. It was, it's always been on a budgetary basis, but I feel like it's just gotten worse and worse because it's creating additional AP rollover accounts. So last year, you had an AP rollover for fiscal year 21. Now you got one for 22, and it's creating multiple AP rollover accounts. It's making it even worse. So I think it's just gotten worse and worse. Where you, when you only had one, it was just easy to fix. But now you got like three of these things happening. And there were some, you know, some frozen entries weren't made either last year, which is making some issues too. But I think this is, I think year one, it worked okay, but after that, I think it just started, it started rolling over to the incorrect account.
So this is not a new problem?
No, it's gotten worse, though. It's, it's got, it's, it's compounded over the years. Like it's, it's, it's worse now than it's been in the past.
But it sounds like it's either a software or some sort of glitch within that, the parameters of that program, or, or that system, something.
Yeah, if, we were on, we were on a call with Tyler, and I don't know if you, Lori's in there, right? I don't know if. When, yeah, so when they were, when they were explaining it, it just sounded like you could mask it a couple of different ways, and it was getting masked to an AP account. There was like three ways to do it.
Don't use those accounting terms.
Oh, well, well, it's like it's, when you, when you close it, when you, when you close the system. Say it again, Lori?
I'm, I'm trying to use a different kind of language than your auditor language.
Sorry.
There's one part of the system that is not communicating correctly to the other part of the system in order to give us a trial balance or a balance sheet that makes sense. So finance, Santo, and Tyler spent a couple hours on the phone going into the system itself, how the system was set up, the backend.
Okay.
And figured out where some of the issues were. So we're very hopeful that we have fixed that.
Yeah. So when you roll over the system into the new year, at the end of the year, it closes your encumbrances, right? And it creates your reserve for encumbrance account. And what it's doing is instead of, instead of creating that, it's creating an AP. So you have, now you have an AP on your balance sheet that doesn't really, is not really an AP, which is hitting expense accounts also.
So once.
We just fixed all that.
Okay. I was going to say, so once this gets straightened out, this software program will function as intended?
Yep. It's fixed as of right, it's fixed as of right now.
Okay. And it's the company that supports this system solid?
Oh, yeah, they've been fabulous.
Okay. I've got, I've been around enough to see companies that all of a sudden, it's like, oh, sorry, we're no longer supporting, you know, whatever the, the program is, and walk away. And the town's like, ah, that's what happened.
That will happen with any software.
Phoenix Sun Guard, that's exactly what happened. Yeah, they just said, we're not going to do it anymore. So we were scrambling. We went to the new company. The new company sent us people to train on it, which happened. And then like Santo said, the first year we did it, we thought we were all set. But at the end of the year, it wouldn't roll over correctly, and it's just been compounding since then.
And it was mid-year when this happened. Of course, what software company quits mid-year? That was rhetorical, Dan.
No comment.
So, yes.
So presumably with these fixes now, having been identified, next year's audit should be timely.
We are.
One would hope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, do we know if there's going to be any ramifications due to the time period from the state?
OPM will probably require me to, excuse me, give a two-week update on the progress that we're making, just to make sure that we're, you know.
Working on it.
Working on it. Yeah.
Yeah. So nothing serious. I think the state is a little lenient the first time, the first couple of times, actually. I think they're okay with it. But if you become repeat offenders, then that's when they'll start getting a little more aggravated with it.
Okay.
But in terms of a timeframe, can we just clarify when the audit was originally due and when CLA expects?
They're due on the end of every calendar year, December 31st. So we are hitting the more than six months late mark, and that's when the auditing firm would like to have a discussion like we're doing now with the panel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how long does the auditing firm anticipate it will be from now until the audit is complete?
What do you think, Santo? End of the summer?
Yeah, I think at the end of the summer.
Okay, follow on to that, the smell lighter. So if we don't finish the 24 audit until the end of the summer of 25, what's that going, I think what was asked earlier, what's that going to do to the 25 audit?
What'd we do to it one time?
No, understand that. But will we be, will we be done with the 25 audit, assuming everything goes right from the fixes we've done here? Will we be on time with the 25 audit on December 31st of 2025?
I don't see anything holding you guys back from being on time. Lori, I mean, Lori, what do you think? I mean, 25 is pretty good right, right now, right? As is.
Yeah, I think so.
And the rollover is going to work pretty good. So you're not going to have any issues with the rollover.
Right.
And that's fixed now. So I think, I think you should be on target.
Yeah.
So Santo was a consultant. So is he also going to be a consultant for the next year, or is it, or is our auditing company?
We can. So we've, we've spent a little bit extra money this year just to get the consulting help, as he was our prior auditor and now is on the other arm, which he explained.
Yeah.
Yes, I still have the ability to utilize him. Hopefully I'll be utilizing him less and less.
Yeah, it'll be less this year, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tyler is going to handwalk us through the rollover this year. So they will be on the phone as Tammy's hitting the buttons.
Okay. And I'm sorry, when did Santo migrate again? Was that?
Santo, when did you migrate? Like, just January?
I, last Jan, so I officially moved over last January, but I did finish a few audits that I had that were outstanding. So I mean, the whole, the, the complete departure from assurance, it really happened this January, but I started to practice last January, or service line, anyway.
Okay.
I, I had a, like, two, two audits that were open that I had to finish. Yep.
Lori, this is Diane. I'd like to ask a question.
Santo, we have a question.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm sorry?
Having the period tonight, I guess I can't get into the online session, so I'm on my phone. This is to Santa and Lori, this late audit being completed will get dated with the date that the auditors finally draft their final opinion. Will this have an impact on how we're rated by rating agencies for our bonding?
No, I don't think so. But what's, what would hold us back if it were any later is our ability to go to a competitive public sale if we were to issue a really large bond issue. And that's not going to happen until next year. So my answer to that would be no. I've never seen that be a case, Diane.
Okay.
No, if you, if you have audited financial statements before you issue bonds, you're, you should be fine. So if you, you're not issuing before August, and then your next audit's not really due till December, so you're, you're fine.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything? Santo, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to spend with us tonight.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, sorry about the, if I knew it was going to be this bad, I probably just would have came, came out there, apologized for that.
You're not the only one. We always have technological issues. Take care.
Okay. All right. Have a good one.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. We do exist. We are down here.
Brian, you want to log on to Board of Finance?
All right. I believe that brings us to item number eight A, ARPA updates. Anything on that?
No, not really, other than what I gave you on the calendars.
Okay. And then we will be on eight B, the Department of Public Works Action Committee update. Before we get to the proposed motion in the agenda, did anybody want to say anything from the Public Works Action Committee? No? All right. Good to go. We would like to appoint someone from the Board of Selectmen to be a representative on that committee. So the motion is move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint someone to serve as the Board of Selectmen representative on the Department of Public Works Action Committee. Any discussion?
Who would like to do it?
Nobody. I don't know, I mean. How often do you meet?
That's a good question.
Once a month, Mondays, 6:30.
Okay, that's fair. But what, what part of the month? First or last?
Third Monday.
Okay.
Third Monday of the month. Unless it's like Martin Luther King Day, then that's the Tuesday.
I can do that. You want to do that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, sure. All right.
Well, the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Keith Pettit. Let's call the steam train.
Love it.
To serve as the Board of Selectmen representative of the Department of Public Works Action Committee.
All right. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. And any abstentions, please say so. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany?
An enthusiastic aye.
And outvoted, aye, from Keith Pettit. Thank you. All right. Third Monday. That's going in the calendar. That brings us to eight C, Charter Revision Commission First Draft Report. Donna was nice enough to put all of our ideas from the special meeting together, and that will be going over to the CRC Committee shortly. They are scheduled to meet on June 11th to consider possible language revision. All right. Any other discussion on that before we? Excellent. Eight D, any other old business? Moving right along. That brings us to item nine B.
We're going to have to pay for that for now, because they didn't come down with a recommendation. They're two different.
Got it.
No release proposals. I'm not sure which one they're going to, until they vote.
So we will move on to nine C, approved resident state police trooper contracts. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the contract between the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of State Police, and the town of Hebron for a contract period from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2027, for the services of one resident state police trooper, and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the agreement. Discussion.
Do it every so many years. So let me tell you, I love reading that contract.
It's your relish.
Did you read it?
I actually read it, but it's very dry.
It is.
Very dry. Um, I have no objections. Um, so without any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, abstentions, let me know. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye? Motion passes. Thank you, Andy. Um, that brings us to nine D, review the Board of Selectmen Liaison, Liaison Assignments and the Rapid Response Plan. Uh, we, we did already cover one of the liaison assignments in the DPW, um, appointment, but there is also, I think, do we need to, we need to officially state, um, someone going on to AHM as a representative and then discuss the Rapid Response Plan?
Yeah, why are we discussing the Rapid Response Plan? That was approved and?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but Peter was named the spokesperson. You just had to, now with him.
No, he wasn't, not on the plan.
No.
Not at all.
Tiffany. Well.
It's listed as Chair of the Board. There are no names in there.
He was the contact that was listed to deal with the town manager and then he just bursted information to the rest of the.
Oh, okay. So we could just do.
It, it does say Chair and then it says anytime the board makeup changes, we basically just need to say, like in this instance.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, gotcha.
Um, it's, it's just, I mean, I would think we would do this anytime board makeup changes. Um.
Yeah, I just need one go to, and it's got to be confirmed by the board select.
Yep.
So you guys do whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
So.
As far as the Rapid Response Plan, um, my, my discussion point on it is that we keep it the same as it was, which was the Chair and then Tiffany is, um, responsible for online communications and the, uh, Rapid Response for Facebook and those, those kinds of social media responses.
That's me.
Any objections?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll, um, I'll volunteer to cover AHM for now, if you'd like, if there's no objection.
No, if you want, that's fine. I mean, normally it's, normally it's the Chair, but they specify that.
I'm sorry.
The only.
Represent for the board select.
Okay.
I don't think on voting that it should just be the representative. I'm just trying to think. I know when I was Chair for all those years, I was a representative and I, myself.
Yeah.
It was myself and Mel.
Yeah, so I was, I was still out signing a random board, but AHM, it should be the Chair. Normally the Chairman of the Board and also the Chairman of the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Or I take that back, Mel was the Chair.
No, it was not Chair.
Rep, so I'm not sure that's written in stone. We can check that.
Okay.
I, I, I can't, that would be the only hiccup.
Hmm.
Is, you know, and it's really.
Just trying to share like the work, you know.
During the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, when AHM presenting their.
If you want to go in my gut, it's, it's a, it's originally town representatives and it's, it's normally somebody from the board second, somebody from the board of finance. I don't believe it has to be the Chairs, even though it was when you and Mel were Chair, but then even when Mel stepped down, Diane, everyone, Mel still.
No, Mel stepped in.
Ooh, it's the same. I think it has to be.
Yeah, because I, I had heard it in passing that I thought it was the Chair, but you're right. I mean, Mel has been it forever.
He stayed on.
Um, all right. In that case then, I will recommend that we, uh, appoint Tiffany as the liaison for AHM services.
I can help.
Any objections?
Nope. Nope.
All right. Pass.
Thanks.
And were there any other assignments that, uh, Pete had or any other ones that we need to talk about or rearrange filling?
I don't think so either.
Okay. All right. That brings us to item nine E, uh, the Horton Property Master Plan. Um, this was something that had come up previously in our discussions, uh, during the budget season. Um, it was just put on the agenda this meeting and due to some vacation and some time off, uh, Matt and Andy have not had a chance to kind of go through it and create a presentation for us yet.
Okay.
So, um, it's on new business this, uh, meeting.
Mm hmm.
And it will continue to be on old business going forward as we work our way through it. And Matt and Andy will work on getting a presentation for us in short order.
Yes.
All right.
And I will submit to you some suggestions on that.
Yeah. So what, just quickly, uh, in talking with Matt, I think, um, it's commissioned. There are some other moving parts that are going to affect that. So he wants to make sure everything's on the table. It's not trying to defer to competition. It's, it's a joint. There's proposals with some, uh, new, new businesses and some property ventures that we all want to make sure it's, because it should, it might loosen up some other, other things over there and change. Okay, so he's, they're, they're working on it and it's timely. So I know it'll all, but it'll all flow together. We just want to make sure all the pieces of the puzzle.
It's an important piece of property and we need to do something with it.
Yeah, I agree. So, yeah. Yeah, I think some of this other stuff that's going to free up, might even change how we can even look forward even faster.
Okay, great. All right. First one, Keith.
Hmm. And then we have the, uh, draft agenda for, uh, the meeting on June 26th. Uh, any additions or modifications to that, please forward to Andy and Donna and we'll make it happen. That brings us to nine G, any other new business?
Oh.
And we are going way faster than the board of finance.
Yeah, they're, they're really, I'm not going to allow them to come down. They don't keep the, we move all stuff around for them.
Yeah. Can we give them, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't.
No, 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 I think, I think a heads up.
We've got to sign the time. Okay. We've got to get the time.
Yeah.
Um, but while we're here, uh, item 10, the consent agenda, consent agenda. Um, consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually, maybe voted on as a group. Does anyone have any objections to anything included? The May 15th public hearing, May 15th regular meeting and the tax refunds.
Nope.
Okay. Um, Tiffany, you want to do something?
Uh, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. Approval of minutes, uh, May 15th, 2025 public hearing, May 15th, 2025 regular meeting, tax refunds, Justin and Jocelyn Knight for $407.16.
Um, sorry.
Did I?
Any discussion? No, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Excellent. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, abstentions, let me know. Dan? Aye. Tiffany?
Aye.
Keith? Aye.
Okay.
And that brings us to liaison reports.
Well, I was just appointed to AHM, so I, I don't have an update, but I, I will, I'm hoping to have one.
All right. Well, the excellent thing about this is you also get the next one.
Word back. Uh, they're meeting tonight. I don't know why they're always meet on our meeting nights, but they're meeting tonight. I still have an update.
Yeah, notice that the last.
Yeah, the last few, they met the same night.
Not cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay. Board of Finance, Dan, we're meeting tonight. Not cool, people. Not cool. Land acquisition was supposed to meet last night. But now they are deciding whether they would like to meet the, this upcoming Wednesday or the Wednesday after. So, uh, I may have some information for you at our next meeting, but nothing for tonight. And Claudia does not have anything to report at this time. God, are you sure you don't want to say anything about public works?
Mm hmm.
We have all this time.
I was going to speak at the comment section, public comment.
Excellent. Public comment.
Comment.
Are we already there?
Yeah. Dylan. Waiting for finance.
Where's the X?
Stand behind his chair.
Right here.
You can sit.
No, no, I'm fine. I'm fine. Uh, Todd Hobbit, 98 East Street, Hebron, Connecticut. And, uh, I'm just, I'm going to be following this Horton property. And that's why I came tonight because I'm very, kind of concerned and concerned about that property.
Hmm.
And it's taken only nine years to come to this point, think about doing something with it. So I was one of the 92 people who attended that meeting, the town meeting to purchase the property with all laid out with the master plan that Michael Leary had masterfully put together with the Village Green and all this stuff is wonderful. And I thought it looked great. And I thought the connecting road, John Ward Boulevard over to Kenny Road would make more access around town. It would free up some of the downtown parking for events that happened. We jam up the library and all the parking and then people complain about no parking. Any, long and short is 75% voted to purchase that property for that use of future town expansion of property. Company one Firehouse, which is already on Main Street, it would be centrally located still, accessible for more ways, better. And obviously there was a stumbling block with the DPW being put there, which was part of the reason that we also considered it and a great lawn, again, a nice place. We have the fireman's field that we can use, but that's not very big. We're using Jim Cilio's lot for concerts. And so I, I think that we, we own the land, we bought the land and we bought it right because of all the deferred taxes. So maybe we shouldn't have waited nine more years. I know it'd been really cheap to buy. So I'm just, these are just things that cross my mind with all this stuff that's going on. Um, I think we should keep it. We should, we should do all the utilities through it, sewer, uh, water, electrical and make the road complete so that it's available for future people to already have the infrastructure there for them to use for other parts of it. So, um, I'm also concerned with if we sell the land and, uh, another large conglomerate, say a tractor supply wants to put a building in there, it's owned, we can do it, it's proper. But we're going to get a whole bunch of feedback, pushback, just like Dollar General and we may be opening ourselves up to more litigation and more problems. So to me, we own it, we should use it, we should use it how we voted for it. 75% versus 25% voted for that use. So I just want to make that, I'm going to just be poking on that. And while I am a member of the Action Committee and I've watched this town grow for 40 years, I watched Chicken Farm become a park. I watched traffic changes on East Street where I live and I've seen, uh, a lot of discussion about a lot of things, about how we use our town and our space. I wouldn't mind if, you know, put a park over there too. I don't care, but it, it, it needs to be for future town use that we bought it for. That's my, and I'm interested to hear all these new plans that Matt's got brewing and things like that, that you have some comments on. So I'll be paying attention. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Keith.
I look forward to being there.
Thank you. I'm not going to scam. Great. You know, we had, we, we had five special meetings, I think, when we were dealing with all the, uh, bids and all the, maybe four. All within a week, I think.
Yeah, that, that might've been the week that Peter told me. He's like, I had four town meetings this week and I'm like, how am I going to do four town meetings and three nights of dance and still get like everything done in a week?
I just think.
Yeah, like. Get tight, get tight. Uh, any other, looks like no online public comment. Any other public comments?
Just waiting to approve and sign.
I'll bring something up on your public comment that I forgot. Oh, I'm sorry. You go right now. You, come on, you're more dressed up than I am today. Go for it. That reminded me of something which he normally does. All good, of course. But I was supposed to bring something up and I didn't mention it and, you know, my name's only Chris to ask me that I just make an announcement that. Um, the Dollar General has, uh, hold their request.
Mm hmm. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. So there's no litigation and that, uh, application has been, uh, good, you know, removed.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I couldn't be happier that that happened. And I think a lot of the town residents also couldn't be happier that that happened.
Mm hmm.
Um, but like, you know, I, I've said, and some other people probably think the same thing is that, um, if, if you don't build it, they will come.
Mm hmm.
You know, and so we need to figure out what we as a town.
Yeah.
Can handle and get it there.
Yep.
So that something we can't handle doesn't have the opportunity.
Right.
So, um, we'll, we'll see, uh, we'll see where that goes.
Mm hmm.
I apologize. I know I shouldn't be commenting during public comment.
Well, public comment.
And that was a good lead into public comment. So my name is Jason Guidone. I live at 94 Cone Road. Didn't have to remind me this time, which is breaking the trend. Uh, so one is a thank you to Andy for the hard work in getting the lights done before, I think it was Maple Fest. I think it was done on Maple Fest, right? Those lights were lit and all the bags were down and we looked good. Uh, I think there was, uh, there was a lot of effort that you put into getting that done. So I noticed it. Took me this long to say, hey, good job. Thank you. Um, the, I'm happy about Dollar General as well. I think that, uh, that whole discussion may have opened up some thoughts about redefining our trajectory and our long-term plans for the town. Hopefully that is the case. Um, and if we don't build it, they will come and we will look like, uh, East Hampton or Glastonbury. And I think that would be pretty tragic for the character of the town, um, being so commercialized. Uh, but we do have state legislation that is also impacting our capacity to make decisions. So I don't know what, uh, House Bill, uh, 5002 seems to want to say, all right, you cannot make decisions. We were going to make those decisions for you. You must do this, this and this, where you get no money. I don't know how latched on to the state of Connecticut, we are as Hebron, for money. I haven't looked at that financial sort of aspect. And could we say, we don't want your money anymore. We're going to do what we want as a town. Or do we need no money and we have to comply or figure a workaround, maybe in a private aspect of, of, as an option? So those are some thoughts that I have. Those are some concerns really, like House Bill 5002 is a big deal. Uh, the budget that came through jam packed with, uh, writing of other things. I think it's 1748. I don't remember exactly the number, but it's the budget that came through at 4:00 AM with 649 pages. Uh, that was to be voted on today. So pretty concerning what's going on up there that impacts right here. Because I'm pretty sure there's some unfunded mandates that are coming on to our, our town as well. So, um, it might be good timing to yield the floor to a new bill rate. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3685. They reduced.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I imagine you beat them up.
Well, they were discussing, so they reduced to, to, to 3685, 3685. That's, I think, um, and why is it down to 3685? It was because the ECS money cleared for the state. Okay. We got DCS and we got more money for our town.
Yes.
Well, we were looking at 37, so that's, that's good news. I mean, nobody, nobody likes raising taxes, but you know, 36 is a little bit better than 30.
Yes.
Agreed. Um, all right. Um, so let's circle back to the table nine B, um, which, Dan, do you have that handy with the motion?
Oh, jeez.
Uh, no, that's all right. I got it. Oh.
I have it.
Yeah.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the tax rate bill dated June 5th, 2025 as presented by the Revenue Collector.
All right. And that was for 36.85.
Eight.
Five. All right. Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, uh, abstentions, let me know. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. And that brings us to Tiffany's favorite part.
Tiffany's favorite part. Uh, move to adjourn the Hebron Board of Selectmen's meeting at 7:49 PM.
7:49. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.